Good afternoon, everyone.
Is your mic on?
It's on. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the agenda for the city council meeting of Monday, July 22nd. And I would like to welcome our mayor. I believe she will be giving the presentation for the Mayor's Award of Excellence. So, welcome, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the city council. Thanks for having me here today. I am so excited to present the Award of Excellence for June. It is presented to eight members of the Lincoln Fire and Rescue team who serve on Nebraska Task Force One. The task force is our urban search and rescue team based out of LFR. And I'd love the honorees to stand as I introduce you. The team members include Captain Daniel Ripley, Task Force Leader, Captain Mark Majors, the Rescue Team Manager, firefighter Robert Simmons, a medical specialist, firefighter Amanda Benson, water specialist, firefighter Webster Ferris, also a water specialist, firefighter Justin Henkel, water specialist, firefighter paramedic Brady Pappick, water specialist, and firefighter Captain Michael Wright, also a water specialist. Thank you. Captain Ripley nominated all of the members of Nebraska Task Force One in the category of Valor for heroic actions in response to March flooding in the areas of Columbus and Monroe, Nebraska. On March 14th, Nebraska Emergency Management Agency activated Task Force One to help rescue trapped flood victims. Captain Ripley said it was one of the most challenging environments that the task force has seen. There were winds of more than 60 miles per hour, temperatures in the twenties, extremely intense water currents with waves, and of course debris such as vehicles and ice chunks as big as trucks that were moving downstream. At times, the conditions were too dangerous for the water rescues, for the rescuers to be in the water, so they had to then switch to conduct rescues by helicopter. Despite these conditions, Nebraska Task Force One was able to save 18 civilians and six animals over two days. Captain Ripley wrote that the task force members acted with the utmost bravery and heroism, placing themselves in harm's way to save the lives of others. This award can only be presented to the task force members who are current employees of LFR, but we also want to recognize the other five task force members who are part of this incredible operation. Some of them are in attendance today, and if you're here, please stand as I read your names. Steve Dolezal is retired from Lincoln Fire and Rescue, Ben Bolte is with the Papillion Fire Department, and three members from Omaha Fire Department, Tom Jones, Kevin Machetti, and Thad Greiner. Thank you as well for your involvement. Now, it is my pleasure to present the eight task force members from Lincoln Fire and Rescue with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for June. Please join me in congratulating these heroes for their hard work and commitment to saving lives, not only in our community, but when called upon to help others outside of Lincoln. So, if you could all please come up here, I will present you with the plaques. Congratulations. You can just stay here with the plaque. Okay. Robert. Congratulations. Thank you for your valor. Yeah, don't go sit down. Let's please congratulate them one more time. Assistant Fire Chief Pat Boer would also like to come up and say a few words of congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to keep my remarks short. I'm going to let Captain Ripley do the, make the bulk of the remarks, but I want to say thank you to the council for your, and to the mayor for the time and effort to go through this process. It's, it's very much appreciated. The one comment that I do want to make is that Lincoln Fire and Rescue and the other departments that support our team, there is no requirement to be a part of this Nebraska Task Force One. They volunteer on, of their own time. They choose to do this above and beyond. There's no requirement from us for them to do it. And so, I just want to point out that they have chosen this assignment and this duty on their own. So, I'll turn it over to Captain Ripley.
I'll keep it short, too, but first and foremost, like Chief Boer said, this is a team effort. This is thanks to support of Lincoln Fire, Omaha Fire, Papillion, Grand Island, Ben, Tom, and you know, Steve Dolezal and his retirement, that this is a success. But more importantly, we want to say thank you to the city of Lincoln. Nebraska Task Force One has been around since the Mura building terrorist event in Oklahoma City in 1995, April 19th, and Lincoln has always been supportive of our task force. And they've set the example for the other cities around us, big and small, Omaha, Grand Island, it didn't matter, that you know, thanks to you guys, Mayor, your support, that this has been successful. And you know, thank you guys for allowing us to go out and do good within our state. Oftentimes, our task force is deployed to Texas or other areas around the nation, and this is our first time that we've actually been able to do it in our backyard with our own neighbors. And that's pretty honorable for us to do. It's why we're here. You know, we're here to go anywhere in the nation, but to be able to do it in our own state, in our own backyard, that's really why we do what we do. So, it's thanks to these folks here, like Chief Boer said, that we're able to do it. But thank you guys for allowing us, as the city, to continue to support the task force and, and just please know that we're always ready to go out the door and serve you guys in whatever way we can. So, thank you for this opportunity, very much.
Thank you. If any of you have family here you'd like to point out, or would you like to say anything before you sit down? Any family members here?
Well, we want to thank all of you who support these amazing individuals, because it really is a lot of sacrifice on the part of a whole family when you have these kind of emergency responses that activate in a hot minute. So, thank you for supporting them and their efforts. They couldn't do it without you. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all. But now, we will continue with the regular agenda and wanted to welcome you. I'd like us all to rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, and then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. So, Teresa, can you please call the first item of business?
Yes, we ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet lying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three.
And I believe, do we have Jenica here? Jenica Long, you're being appointed to Aging Partners. Would you like to come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself and what brought you to be willing to volunteer for Aging Partners?
Good afternoon. My name is Jenica Long. I work for the Ponca Tribe of Nebraska. I am their elder advocate. Their address is 1701 East Street here in Lincoln, Nebraska. I am very interested in volunteering for the, with Aging Partners. I think through my advocacy with my clients, I think I can give some really good input on different agenda items that they have coming up.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Does anyone have any questions? Well, thank you. Let's see, I know we have a number of appointees.
Two more. One M.
One M. Is Nancy, is Hove Graul? Okay, could you please come forward? And it looks like you're going to accept an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. So, tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, and why you would like to do that.
Okay, thank you. My name is Nancy Hove Graul, and I've been a licensed architect since 1996, first in Wisconsin, and my husband and I moved back with our twins in 2000. We've been a resident here now for, well, I guess, almost 19 years now. I'm working at Davis Design, which is a firm here in Lincoln, and have enjoyed many of the offerings of Ed Zimmerman in town with his tours and fascination of our historic buildings, and hope that my interests, as well as my education, can help with the board itself.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for your willingness to serve on this committee. Is there any questions? Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
And Alyssa Martin? Hi, Alyssa, thank you for coming down. And tell us a little bit about yourself and your background and why you are planning on serving on the District Energy Corporation Board.
Yes, my name's Alyssa Martin, and I'm an aide to Mayor Gaylor Baird, and I'm working on primarily economic development matters. And my understanding is that the board has two city representatives, one of whom is appointed by the mayor. So, the mayor asked that I serve as a representative on the DEC Board.
And tell us a little bit about your background. Aren't you an attorney?
I, I am an attorney. I worked at Rembert Ludkey before serving in the current administration, and I worked on, I worked with a lot of businesses on corporate matters, and so economic development is part of my portfolio, and I will also be serving as liaison to LES.
Wonderful. Well, that sounds great. Does anyone have any questions? Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, did I cover everyone that is being appointed to committee? Okay, Teresa, back to you.
All right. If nothing else, we can vote on these items. Items one A through P were introduced by Ward. So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Ward, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Items one Q and two A and B were introduced by Bowers.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Bowers, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items four A and B together. They are the application of Gray Whale Sushi and Grill for a Class I liquor license at 2840 South 70th Street, Suite A8, and the related manager application.
Please come forward. Hi, good afternoon. Just please state your name and, and tell us a little bit about your business and the liquor license application.
Yeah.
Would you raise your right hand?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Deisha and from Gray Whale Sushi, and we try to open second location down 2840 South 70th Street. We plan to open on August 1st, the early of August 1st, and we will focus on Japanese food and the beer, wine, sake, kind of, and that's the owner. His name is Hui, Hui Go, and thank you.
So, who's the chef?
So, I would be the chef in a sushi restaurant.
Okay.
So, I will hire local people, I will training in how to make Japanese cuisine, including sushi and Japanese food.
Wonderful. Thank you. Are there any questions? Well, thank you very much for coming down.
Thanks. Do I need to sign?
Please.
Does anyone else wish to come forward for these two applications? All right, if not, I'll call items four C and D together. They are the application of Go Puff for a Class D liquor license at 301 Oak Creek Drive, and the related manager application.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tim O'Neill. I'm with O'Neill Highmark Law Firm in Lincoln, Nebraska, and here on behalf of the applicant. And he probably has a déjà vu feeling, since we were just here like a month or so ago. But bottom line is that Go, Go Brands Inc., the parent company, is still going to be at the top. They just did some corporate restructuring. They've got rapid expansion throughout the country, and so there's been a lot of restructuring and corporate reorganization. But at the end of the day, we have the same manager that you approved, we have the same people, the same operations, it's just, it's a corporate restructuring. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I know there was a protest, or protest may be too strong, but if there was a concern filed, I'd be happy to address that or wait on the rebuttal, whichever you prefer.
Well, you know, I'd, I'd love to hear you explain again the safeguards that you have in place when you make the deliveries and go through the process again, if you, if you could, please?
Absolutely, because I think Go Puff is, is going to stand as the kind of leader in this, in this area. Obviously, all the drivers are trained, they have the proper permits and training certificates that are required for Lincoln and its ordinances. They do something you need when they, when you order. They follow state statute, statute regulations, of course, but when they get a credit card, they take that credit card information. And then, when they go out for delivery, they make sure that the person that is receiving it is the same person that's buying it, that gave them the credit card. They check their driver's license visually, plus they scan it through a device on their iPhone or, or Google phone. That scans it, and it gives an instant read as to whether it's a fake ID or it's a proper license. So, you have two checks. You have the physical person checking it, you also have a scan, which is unusual and really is helpful to safeguard. So, that'll tell immediately if you're selling to a minor or not. The other check is if they're visibly intoxicated, no sale, it goes back. The thing that they do that's a little different, too, is the drivers are not compensated on commission. If they refuse sale, they get, the driver gets paid either way, and they go back to the store, and they are told to do that. And that is, there was just no exceptions to that rule. So, there's no incentive for any driver besides the criminal penalty that they would face, and also the, the applicant or the licensee would also be responsible for that sale to minor. So, they go above and beyond. They have millions of sales a year, not of just liquor, but of food and liquor, and just have not had an issue with this because of their two-step approach, and it's, it's remarkable, really, company and their compliance record.
Well, I know that in the letter of concern, they asked, are there any quantity limitations that is part of your policy in, in selling to any customer?
There are policies. There are no legal restrictions, but we don't sell kegs. We don't sell the little airplane bottles that you see sometimes at convenience stores. We don't do that. But that's about the only limitation that's in place. We follow state laws to fact that the driver has to be 21. They have to prepay before they even leave the store, and then they take the extra step to make sure it's, the recipient is the one that's providing the credit card and the two-step driver ID. So, they're, they're pretty safe about that, and, but as far as size restrictions, just the...
Quantity restrictions, yeah.
The bottle, that's about it.
And then, I know another concern they identified in the letter was, are there a number of kids in the house?
Well, it's just like, it's just like you go to anywhere where you buy alcohol. I mean, there, there can be kids with you when you go to a liquor store, you go to a grocery store, a convenience store. It's the same sort of thing, but it's the same approach as a sale. You're selling to an adult. It has to be a, a, a person that's not intoxicated, and they have to be over 21. So, they follow the same procedures if you go buy liquor, liquor anywhere else. It's exactly the same.
I guess what I'm trying to get at, what are some of the company's policies? If they suspect that there's someone who is of age, they're buying alcohol, but there's really a party going on, some, somewhere in the house for maybe underage drinkers? I mean, what are, I guess, a list of things you ask the drivers to mentally go through to check, to make sure that the sale that they're transacting is, is a safe sale and a legit sale? And I know you talked about scanning the ID, which is great, and, and verifying that the person who purchased the, the item is the actual person on the credit card, but...
Well, it's the same, I think, in, in any sale. It's common sense. You know, if something feels wrong, if there's a, you know, just a bunch of minors sitting around at a party, and they, they appear like they're drinking, you wouldn't sell it. I mean, it's the same thing you would in any sale. Is there any hard and fast rules? No. It's to, you know, you have to follow all the rules to who you're selling it to. You have to apply common sense. If there's a party going on and there's minors there, they're not going to do it.
Okay, so do they, do your drivers, do they go through the, the standard training that all people who sell alcohol go through?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just per the ordinance in the city of Lincoln, and they go, obviously, above and beyond what the other cities require, and we followed all that, night, of all 15 drivers.
Okay, and do you want to tell us a little bit about your, your record or your history the company has in the different locations that they've been operating in?
Well, they're all over the country, and they don't have any violations. None.
None. Okay.
So, I think that speaks for themselves.
All right.
Look that direction.
Right.
Welcome. My question has to do with, recently, Go Puff went in front of the State Liquor Control Commission with their Omaha operation. Could you just give us a summary of what was the result there?
Absolutely, because I, I was at the hearing, so I appreciate you bringing that up. There was a concern, there was some confusion as to a zoning requirement, as to whether they had to have on-sale premises, they had to sell on the business or not. Ultimately, they do not have to make any sale at the premises to complete their business model, which is not to have sales. They do delivery only. The neighbors in Omaha were concerned about having, you know, the neighborhood refrigerator issue, as we all know, where somebody just goes into a convenience store, buys one beer or whatever, and stands outside and drinks it, and then throws a beer can in the neighborhood and has that alcohol problem. We don't want to sell at the premises. We agreed we wouldn't. That was a concern of the neighbors in Omaha. We addressed it, and the, the hearing was really uncontested. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'll call item four E, application of Hub Cafe LLC for a special designated license to cover an indoor area measuring 30 feet by 30 feet and an outdoor area measuring 200 feet by 170 feet at the Jane Snyder Trail Center located at 250 North 21st Street on August 15, 22nd, and 29th, and September 5th, 12th, and 19th, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Hi, I'm Doug Ditman. I'm the owner of Hub Cafe. This is Anastasia Kristofsky. She's the front of the house manager at Hub Cafe. Jacob Thiessen, he's the chef. Hub Cafe and Susan Larson-Rodenberg, who's the community organizer and organizer of this event as well, is here today. And so, we're having the music event called Hub and Soul, and it will be in Union Plaza, and you see the dimensions of that. We work with low-area farmers, and we're going to have a grill that we bring out, and we'll be preparing food and also other food. Chef Jake will be preparing. At the event, we'll have a local beer vendor. At the event, non-alcoholic drinks as well, and local music. And we're, we've bought some fencing for the event that we went in together with, for the Parks Foundation, and we're encouraging cyclists. It's on the trails, and we'll have a bike area for the event as well.
I think you had the cyclist when you mentioned beer, so...
Yeah.
We're in. Okay. Would you like to, to make some comments, too?
Yeah, we've been working to create the restrictions for the space, so it's very well lined out, and yeah, all of the, the checkpoints and the, the staff that we'll have to make sure there's all the correct restrictions in place for restricting minors from drinking, wristbands, special cups for alcoholic beverages, and staff to patrol the entire, entire area.
And how many folks do you anticipate coming out?
We're hoping, what, 200?
At least 200.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully, for each event, we get a good enough response that, you know, people, people want to frequent it, and 200 would be a pretty good number for us for this first try.
Terrific. Does anyone here have any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Ditman, I think you might have said it, but I didn't, I didn't make, no, what time of day would this happen? What day of the week?
Okay, it'll start on Thursday, it'll be on Thursdays beginning August 15th, and that's when Stransky ends. It'll end this 7th, and then, or 8th. So, we wanted to wait till Stransky was done. It'll be on Thursdays and 5 to 8.
5 to 8, and well, I put 4 to 9, so that there'd be plus, minus an hour for set up and tear down.
And the next six Thursdays, or next five Thursdays after August 15th.
Wonderful. Well, thank, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to talk on this item? Okay, thank you all very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we can vote on these items?
Nope, we have one more.
One more? Oh, sorry.
Item four F, application of Kincater Brewing Company for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 42 feet by 160 feet at Lincoln Station at 201 North 7th on August 31st, September 14th and 28th, October 5th and 26th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Welcome.
I'm sorry, 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
Hey, guys. Cody Schmick, C-O-D-Y-S-C-H-M-I-C-K. I'm one of the owners of Kincater. We started this last year for Husker games, and just asking if we can do it again. We had no issues last year. Had our security team there every time, put together really fun, lively event downtown. The reason I do 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM is because we don't really know when the games are going to be scheduled, when we put these licenses in, so it gives us a little bit of flexibility there. We will most likely open around 9:00 AM in the morning, just because of the farmer's market, we, and that's something we, we definitely do, and we work together with the farmer's market, so we're not crossing over and, and running them out. Me and Jeff are neighbors down there, so we, we work together... Had our security team there every time, put together a really fun, lively event downtown. The reason I do eight AM to two AM is because we don't really know when the games are going to be scheduled, when we put these licenses in, so it gives us a little bit of flexibility there. We will most likely open around nine AM in the morning, just because of the farmer's market. And that's something we definitely do and we work together with the farmer's market. So we're not crossing over and running them out. Me and Jeff are neighbors down there, so we worked together great last year. The reason we go a little later is so we have time to tear down. So the bar actually closes at midnight, so we do have a little bit of time after that to tear down. Any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Chair, yes, thank you. Mr. Schmick, thank you very much for coming forward. You said you did this last year a little bit. Did you have any issues or problems, anything that you learned from last year you're doing differently this year?
You know, no issues or problems, I would say. We touched base with the police officers that patrol that area pretty quickly. My security guy and myself did just ask them what they wanted to see. They walked through our events a couple of times, said that everything looked really good. We didn't have any incidents that, you know, that we couldn't handle. We had a couple of people come in that we had to ask to leave and not serve, but besides that, nothing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to testify on this item? Okay, thank you very much.
I will move approval of items four A through F.
Second. Moved by Christensen. Seconded by Ward. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next then, our public hearing resolutions. Item five A is accepting a report of new impending claims against the city for June sixteen through thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Is there anyone here who would like to come forward on a claim against the city?
You're exiting.
Oh, okay. I don't think we have anyone. Okay, we'll go on to item five B, approving Downtown Lincoln Association's twenty nineteen, twenty twenty BID budget and program of work for the Downtown and West Haymarket Management and Maintenance Business Improvement Districts. Welcome.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good.
Todd Ogden with Downtown Lincoln Association. Two oh six South Thirteenth Street, Suite one oh one.
Wonderful.
We are here to propose our, this would be our fiftieth year as the organization, our fortieth year doing maintenance BIDs and our thirtieth year doing management BIDs. So this will be our thirtieth management budget, fortieth maintenance putting together. And we actually did an RFP in twenty seventeen, which outlined four years of our budgets, which included two percent increases. So the budget we're proposing for you today is in line with that, with a two percent increase on both maintenance and management. And if you have any questions on how the process works, especially for those of you that may be new and are curious on that, be happy to answer any of your questions. And Dan Marvin with Urban Development is here as well to answer any questions that I may not be able to answer on that end.
Well, can you tell us a little bit about some of the personnel costs? Like how many full-time employees and some of the work that they're doing in the downtown area?
Yes, so management has about six full-time employees and four part-time employees. Maintenance has eight full-time equivalent employees. And we also contract with groups like Community Alternative Workers in Nebraska. They're the ones out, especially picking up the recycling and trash. And we couldn't do it without those contracts. And we also have temporary labor there. So maintenance, depending on the weather and everything, that's where we kind of have to shift, whether we have temporarily remove in and out, whether we need to weed more. We're really trying to keep them hydrated right now as it's tough. And management side has stayed pretty consistent where, yeah, we do have about the five right now full-time equivalent employees and work with a lot of university interns as well through marketing and events and things like that.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Please keep up the good work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay. All right, if not, we can vote on these two items. Item five A, the report of claims, was introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ward, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Five B was introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ward, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next, as our public hearing ordinances second reading, item six A, text amendment one nine zero zero three. This is the application of architecture, et cetera, amending Lincoln Espo code, chapter twenty-seven point oh two, definitions, to add a new definition for retail sales, large items. Amending the parking requirement, special conditions, to add that large item retail sales require one parking space per six hundred square feet of floor area. Amending uses with special parking requirements to add retail sales, large items.
Perfect, thank you. Hello again. We are here with the text amendment that is for the new definition of the large retail sales. And what we found was, as we did our studies across the city, this was an amendment that would be good for all. So we looked at presenting that as a text amendment and it is for large retail sales where it is a showroom, generally picked up or delivered items. And the parking spaces then are from one parking space per six hundred square feet.
Any questions?
I like it.
Okay.
I'd like to ask Mr. Carey and staff some questions, please.
Certainly.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department.
Thank you, Mr. Carey, for coming forward. I appreciate you and I read and understand kinda. Is this going to, are we seeing any bad precedents? Is this is going to be some real drastic change that will... I'm always terrified I'll do something and then it'll come back and later on I have to eat crow.
Yeah, I think it's always good to think about what will be applied citywide and that's what this zoning code change would do. In this case, we did think through this, both with the applicant and within our staff in the planning department, about how this would actually benefit the city. We're decreasing the requirement for parking from one to three hundred to one to six hundred square feet for the large item retail as defined in this amendment. And really, it made sense to the specific application for the special permit that came forward for the Fletcher Ave item that you all have already acted on and approved. And in discussing that further with staff and the applicant, it made sense to have that apply citywide. We do not feel like there is a negative to that, partly because we do want to decrease parking where we can. It is a cost to developments in general, as well as, you know, we'd rather see buildings and businesses rather than parking lots if it's reasonable and possible. And in this case, in these types of uses, we know that the trip generation is lower for these types of commercial activities, the large item retail, compared to other typical commercial smaller items. So the parking generation just simply isn't as high as others, and so that's how this makes sense.
Thank you.
Terrific. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item six B is change of zone one nine zero one seven. Application of Kibla Hussein for a change from R six residential to B three commercial on property generally located at five thirty-four North Twenty-seventh Street.
Good afternoon. My name is Hussein Kibla, owner of, I mean, Kitchen and Grocery. And I got the slot, I bought the slot from the city, agreeing to put Middle Eastern Bakery, baklava and whatever, like some healthy stuff and good stuff that the city doesn't have, like the pita bread and all that, and that's what I'm applying for.
Remember.
Well, tell us about the progress. I saw the plans and the submission. Where are you on the construction?
I cannot do anything until the zone changing and then they will issue the permit and then we'll start doing everything. And I'm still talking to a lot of different people. I love hearing from others and having idea from other people because, I mean, there's always a better thing to do. And I just keep asking and asking and asking day after day. And hopefully, by the time we get the zone changing and I can pull the permit and then I'll put the whole plan together. But it is right now in the hand of architect. So it's going to be like three-story buildings. Downstairs is going to be like a walk-in cooler and freezer. And then the first floor is going to be the sales place. And upstairs where I'm planning on having like a pita bread system, little machine to just keep going with the bread, so everything is fresh and just going down to sell and serve the baklava, maybe tables and chairs for coffee, hot tea, and some healthy stuff that people will be looking forward to see.
So if everything works out and you select your general contractor, when do you hope to open? When would you love to open the store?
I always, I did a lot of old properties and project, but I have four boys and wife and a restaurant and do handyman. But this is my goal and what keep me going and want me to go really fast. My kids live about like four blocks from where I work. And I grab even the kids around the block to show them. I'm really worried about us as generation when we grow in. Our kids always just want to go easy with the laptop, electronic stuff. Kids in these days, they don't even know where the eggs come from or the milk or the bread, you know? So I always like to grab them and show them and training them. Maybe they will remember it when they get older. And I'm so proud of the, of Americans who build this strong country. Like when I have about one, two, three, four properties. One of them is a building nineteen hundred, two of them built in nineteen twenty-six, and one built in nineteen twenty-eight. And every time I go there, I have everything gutted and I just put more insulation, do the electrical work and all that. But it just show me who built this country and why it's so strong because it built by that generation. And I'm so happy and glad to be part of it. And I want to add some more if I can. It's not going to be as good as they did, but at least I'm trying.
We're glad you're doing this, so thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'd like to ask Mr. Carey again to come and talk about the changes we're making on North Twenty-seventh.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department.
So North Twenty-seventh Street is kind of this little urban village, this industrial corridor, not industrial, retail corridor. Does this fit in okay there?
Yes, it does. So the bigger, wider picture of this area is we have the North Twenty-seventh Street redevelopment plan that's in place already. A couple of steps have already happened to help this type of development happen that we are in support of and therefore in support of the zoning change to allow it to happen. And that is that previously, there was a blighted four-plex on this property that has since been demolished and is gone. So that was the first step to just begin the process of helping this area in one way. And then really, the execution of the redevelopment plan is obviously to have development and businesses to come in and invest in the area. And so this is exactly what that plan is envisioning and, you know, piece by piece and property by property. And so that is the bigger picture and this is a part of that implementation of that redevelopment plan.
Thank you, that was my concern, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Teresa? Next. That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. We just have one item under ordinances third reading, item seven A. Street name change one nine zero zero four, to remove all reference to Randolph Street Bypass for a portion of G Street, and to remove all reference to Randolph Street Bypass for a portion of Randolph Street, generally located between South Twenty-first Street and Capital Parkway. Introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Shob, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are items eight A through F. Today is not an open microphone session.
I move adjournment.
Second.
Moved by Christensen, seconded by Shob. Please call the roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. We are adjourned.